I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right, thank you, Robert. Okay Dana, you want to take role?
Yes, thank you. Chair Thomas.
Here.
Vice Chair Klinger, absent. Commissioner Aguilar.
Here.
Commissioner Campbell.
Here.
Commissioner Gargis.
Here.
We could have a motion to excuse Commissioner Klinger's absence, please?
Yes, I would like to make a motion excusing Commissioner Klinger's address or absence. You got a second? Okay, Victor, if you have a moment, please.
Oh, it cleared, try it again. It probably cleared everything, try it again.
Try again, okay, let's see, vote again. Oh, this is the clear button, I'm sorry.
There, try it again.
Vote again. All right, very good. Now, let's try, there we go.
We're having technical difficulties.
So that passes. Thank you, everybody. Okay, so, time for the approval of agenda by motion of the planning commission. This is the time to notify the public of any changes to the agenda, rearrange the order of the agenda, and provide an opportunity for any member of the planning commission or staff to request an item be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second. All right, very good. Please vote. I'm gonna clear, now let's vote. All right, so the agenda is fine. And I guess I should ask staff if there were any changes.
No changes.
You probably would have told me if there was. Okay, thank you, thank you, Crystal. Okay, and also I do want to briefly introduce.
Want to turn it off? Thank you.
It's Christmasy, it's Christmas lights. I do want to briefly, I do want to introduce, we have a sit-in for our normal Assistant City Attorney Amy Grayson. We have Carol Lynch with us today, who apparently was here last about 30 years ago in this room.
Correct.
Performing a similar function, so welcome back, thank you very much.
Thank you, it's a pleasure to be here.
All right, thank you very much, Carol. Okay, let's see, consent calendar, we have nothing on that. Continued items, we have no, none of those. Oh wait, I skipped oral communications, thank you, I'm sorry, let me go back. Time for oral communications. At this time, members of the public may address the planning commission regarding any items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission pursuant to the Brown Act. The commission cannot discuss or take action on any items not on the agenda unless authorized by law. Those members of the public wishing to speak are asked to come forward to the microphone and state their name for the record. All speakers will be limited to a period of five minutes. And this is for items that, if we are talking about items on the agenda, a little bit later, so right now is open forum for anyone. So, I'm opening the oral communications period. Yes, Ms., would you like to address the commission?
Don't be shy.
Would, thank you. My name is Lynn Larson. I just want to bring to your attention that I have a team of people here tonight to answer any questions you may have on the multi-use permit for 48 River Sea. I completed the application and submitted it for the retailer Vernon Spencer, who sold the home to June and Baxter Arnold. Any questions you may have might be established, the nature of your question might be established, or might establish who best would answer the question, because we have a lot of moving parts, a lot of people involved. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Larson, and when we talk about that item, you know, we'll give you every opportunity to speak also then. So, does anyone else want to come and speak during the oral communications period? No? All right, so we will close that and we will move on the agenda.
Have we welcomed Dana yet?
Oh, yes. And we did have the retirement of Robin Roberts at our last meeting, so now we have Dana.
Engstrom.
Engstrom. Engstrom.
Engstrom is sitting in as interim city clerk.
She was appointed.
Yes, acting city clerk until Monday.
Oh, acting city clerk.
Till Monday, huh?
All right, well, thank you Dana, we appreciate you helping us out tonight.
Thank you.
All right, very good. All right, very good. Let's see, okay, so going back to our agenda, consent calendar, we don't have anything, continued items, we have none, scheduled matters, reorganization of the planning commission, election of new chairperson and vice chairperson for 2019. So, this, this particular item, I have been very proudly serving as your chair for the past year, but entertain any option or any motion anyone has to, for a new chair for the planning commission for this year.
Okay, I'd like to nominate Patty Campbell for a chair.
Very good. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
All right, well, we have a nomination for Patty Campbell as the chair of the planning commission 2019. Please vote. And it passes unanimously. Congratulations, Patty. So, do we switch now?
We'll switch chairs.
We'll switch to the vice first.
You should take the nomination for vice chair and then we can do the reorganization.
Okay, well then we will take nominations for the vice chair of the planning commission for 2019.
I nominate Robert Aguilar.
Mr. Aguilar, do we have a second?
Second.
You have a second, all right. So, we're gonna clear, and now we're gonna vote on Mr. Aguilar as the vice chair of the planning commission for 2019. And that passes unanimously. So, congratulations.
Thank you. Thanks for your service, by the way.
Well, you're very welcome, I was very, I enjoyed it very much. So, now do we move around?
Switch chairs.
Fire drill.
Switch main blocks.
Where do I go? Do I go here?
Oh, you gotta be in alphabetical order.
Alphabetical from this way.
For now, you can just go ahead and come switch here.
Retr. In the hot seat again, Patty.
You know what? This is the best seat in the house.
I don't, we still love that seat.
That's the best seat in the house.
Because you get the best view from there. Exactly. That is the best seat in the house, no kidding, it really is. That's funny.
I like this seat, do we go? Can I sit here next to you?
Yeah.
All right, I'm glad to see you.
That's good, thanks.
I got new water, too.
Well, thank you all very much, and congratulations to you. Thank you for being chair of the past year.
Thank you very much, Patty.
Okay, we'll move forward now. New business, minor use permit 18-13 at 48 River Sea Road in the trailer park. The applicant is Baxter and June Arnold. The request is for a minor use permit to allow a two-story manufactured home within Seal Beach shores located in the residential high-density Art HD 33 zoning area. May we have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair, fellow commissioners. This evening we have item B. Item B, to allow the two-story manufactured home within Seal Beach shores. As you can see, the location of the lot is right here on River Sea Road, within the trailer park. It's surrounded by residential uses with the San Gabriel River here to the west of it. A minor use permit is before you this evening because the development code requires that any two-story cabanas or two-story manufactured homes be required to get approval through the planning commission and meet certain requirements of the zoning code, and be looked at through Title 25. Right here we have the floor plan. The top portion of the floor plan is the first floor. As you can see, we have a bedroom here, a bath, kitchen and living room area. On the second floor, we have the family room and a second bedroom and a bathroom in that area. It's a two-bedroom, two-bath floor plan, approximately 1,275 square feet, and is similar to other floor plans through the park. The elevations here, it's, as you can see, it's a two-story plan. It does have a deck here at the rear near the San Gabriel River. The unit's already constructed, it's waiting to be delivered. As you can see, this is the front of the, the unit, which will be out on River Sea. This is the back with the deck headed out towards the rear. As I said earlier, it meets all of the requirements of our development code and the requirements of Title 25 as it pertains to heights and setbacks for the location of this unit. The, there's been no correspondence received regarding this item, and with that, that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you. Do any of the commissioners have comment, questions of staff?
Yes, I'm gonna ask a little bit about the history on, on treatment of second story or modifications to existing trailers in the trailer park. Now, I'm gonna really show my age and how long it's been since I've been on the council, so you have to, I have to apologize in advance for this, okay? At one time, the trailer park was a designated low-mot income housing area, and when I was on the council, eons ago, admittedly, I haven't kept up with this particular piece, so I'm gonna just be flat-out acknowledge that upfront. In order to do a modification to an existing unit, there had to be a trailer on the site, and the modification was in addition to that trailer. And in addition to that, the ownership had to be qualified under the low-mot income standards for HCD, and we had redevelopment bonds that were issued to help pay for, I think it was partially for the acquisition of the park at one time, and for infrastructure or for other outstanding debt. I don't know, that was after my time, but that's what I recollect. All that's changed now, number one, and number two, they're removing an existing trailer to add a new manufactured home, is the way I read this. So, the zoning text must have been changed sometime beforehand to allow that to occur, so please, just fill me in on, I'm sure it's encyclopedic, but fill me in on what happened over the last two decades, so I get an idea of how this is.
Sure. So, as it was noted in the staff report, the zoning code and planning regulations don't typically apply in Seal Beach shores, which is why we typically don't see that at these meetings, and it required staff to do a little bit of some history research on our own. So, we did look up some of that information, and you're correct, initially there were set parameters because it was a designated low-income area for the city, and it still does meet that requirement for the city. My understanding of it is that it, the entire park does not have to qualify as low, there's different designations. In regard to removing the mobile home and putting in a manufactured home, there have been different changes with Title 25 throughout the years, so we can superimpose any of our regulations to be more strict than what Title 25 would allow. This particular project has already gone to HCD. They have gotten all of the required approvals from HCD before we would take it in for an application. So, as it sits right now, they meet all of the state requirements. The building official has reviewed it again for further compliance with Title 25, and now, this is there because there is a, the only provision that we have in our entire zoning code that applies to that area is that if it is going to be a two-story. Again, in researching part of this, this project, we did see that at times there were different studies that were put in place as to whether there should be a limit to the number of two stories that are allowed in that area, and again, a lot of the, the state regulations and changes that were put in place sort of preempted that, so there is no more number that can be set. There is still the requirement that they get the minor use permit just to make sure that what is being put into that location is consistent with that, that area, and so that's the process that we're in right now.
Is the trailer, the existing trailer still there, or has it been removed?
Madam Chair, it's been removed.
It's been what?
It has been removed.
It's been removed, okay. I did not know if that was still a requirement, because, like Vic, we go back a long time on this. Matter of fact, when the trailer park was purchased by Richard Hall and the residents banded together to secure funding to get it back from him, I was on the council then and involved with that. Dr. Paul Yost and I were a subcommittee of two, working with the folks from the trailer park to secure bond funding so that the trailer car, trailer park could be purchased by Link Housing, who deals with nonprofits, and we were able to get all that accomplished before the court date with Richard Hall, because he basically told everybody, "I own the park, I own your homes." Well, no, these folks had mortgages on their homes, you don't own them. But, it could have been a really nasty situation for the residents, because they just didn't have the financial wherewithal to fight him, and the city took up that fight, and we prevailed, we got Link Housing to, to own the park and manage the park, and we didn't have to deal with Richard Hall anymore, but he was smart enough to know exactly what we would qualify in band, bond funding, and we got the bound, bond funding. We also had to go up to Sacramento and appear before the NPROP, which is Mobile Home Park, whatever, and plead our case for a million dollars in funding. We received it, and we spoke with several gentlemen, gentlemen, who were there early on when the whole trailer park was funded, and they said this was the only loophole, that we closed it. So, we were able to, to secure that and secure the homes for these folks. So, you know, that was a project that was near and dear to my heart, make sure these people kept their homes, okay? And, yes, it was the, it's a city's low to moderate income housing. That's why our concern is that it stay that, or, because the city, the state has requirements for us, and if that suddenly ceases to be the low to moderate income housing, we gotta find someplace else, right? Too much vacant land in this city to do that on, all right? So, it's critical that that stay as our low to mod housing, okay? Many of the people that have been there have been there a long time, so they, as long as they continue to stay, that is very good. But every time somebody else comes in, we have to ask ourselves those questions, because the repercussions would ripple out to other areas, okay? And I will be speaking with you two after the meeting, because we do have, I know of a situation where somebody moved a coach in, and it was five feet into, over the property line, well, the, the lines, and they've got a problem now, because they wanted to upgrade their coach, and they can't do it, okay? So, I have to speak with you on that. Okay, is anybody in the audience, that said, is anyone in the audience?
I have, I have a question, I'm sorry. And this isn't specific to this, this situation, but it is a question regarding the status of low-income housing. Is it, what are the parameters of that? Is it a percentage on the property itself? Is it the pricing? How does that work? So, I mean, is it just a matter of how much somebody pays for a mortgage or a rent? I'm just curious. If, I mean, what would happen, what would have to happen for it to lose its classification?
There's, there's different formulas for, for doing it. There's percentages as far as what the county requires or what the county designates as low or moderate. There's different levels of it, and I apologize that I don't know the exact numbers. The finance department works with the park to make sure that there are audits being done, that everyone's filing the, the correct forms to ensure that we still are in compliance with what the state requirements are, and I know that there are people coordinating with the property management company out there to ensure that we still are retaining the number that we need to retain there. I just unfortunately don't have that information for you tonight.
Okay, thank you.
It's, I can just chime in, it's based upon income. The thing about it is that there was a percentage or a number, I can't remember, Patty might know, it's been so long, a number of the spaces within the trailer park had to be maintained as low mod, and I don't know where that number stands anymore, I don't know who's ma, who's monitoring it, I don't know if HCD is responsible for that, or the new, new ownership, and along the lines of Patty's concerns, and no offense to the, to the people that are applying here, I mean, I'm all for seeing people improve their properties, but if we lose that designation, or, you know, I mean, we're in trouble anyway, we can't meet the standards the state's thrown at us to begin with, and all of a sudden now something like that makes it even more difficult for us to comply. So, I'm just, I'm still a little bit fuzzy on how all that's being handled today, and that's why I asked the question.
No, believe me, and that is definitely something that the city is fully aware of, that it is vital that we make sure that we're retaining the number that we need to retain, because as was pointed out, we don't have any other areas or much land where we can create some new development to designate in such a manner. So, we, we have been coordinating to make sure that there is a focused effort in making sure that we are retaining the number and that we're documenting the fact that we're retaining that number.
We also have units here within Old Town, they're just sprinkled throughout, that are low to moderate income, and most people don't even know where they are. We did have one incident where a woman purchased a two-story home, and she rented the upstairs apartment, and she got her loan through HUD, applied through low to moderate income housing, and she did that for several years, and then she got married, and then she and her husband had a child, and she decided she wanted to make the house, they were gonna live in the whole house, and convert the upstairs to part of their living quarters, and they were told they couldn't do that, because she got the loan through HUD on the pretend, and that it's low to mod. So, it was either keep it or move. So, that was hard, but that's, you know, it's, that's what, it is what it is. So, all right, any other comments from commissioners? No. Now, we'll open it up to, does anyone else want to comment on this?
Hey, Patty, Patty, hit the gavel. We usually open it by hammering.
Oh. You bang it all the time, I never did that. I only open and close it. I only open and close it. Okay, I'm sorry.
Good evening. I just want to add a little clarity.
Could we have your name, please?
Oh, Serena Goss.
I'm closer to the microphone, too.
Oh, Serena Goss. So, I'm a local realtor. I actually sold the lot in Seal Beach shores to the Arnolds, and I represented them as buyers. So, there is a process for actually qualifying residents who purchase in Seal Beach shores to ensure that income level, asset level, and everything is compliant with what you're discussing, with a low to moderate income housing. So, there is a ratio within the community that's governed essentially by the community. So, you can be assured that in this case, this is, everybody's still compliant with that. So, we have to go through quite a process in order to actually purchase in the community. So, anyway, I just wanted to add that little.
As I recall, so, thank you for reminding me about that. As I recall, what happened was that the, the park was bought by the residents themselves, as, and what they needed was a nonprofit to, to be the conduit for the financing. That's where Link came in way back then. So, they have a governing board, and they still operate with.
They do. But there's no financing, so you have to buy these units all cash.
Okay.
And so, however, there's a lot of people who are retiring, they either downsize from another property, and then they will acquire one of those homes, but their income is very limited, because they're either on a very limited retirement income or something to that effect. So, income level is what is qualifying them.
Right.
And then, and then they, but they have to purchase the asset, the actual land, and go through all the process with the registration with HCD and all that. So, all that process has been completed in this case. So, you can be assured that we are compliant.
Are there still CCNRs in place on the property?
There, there are, everything's still in place. So, we had many discussions with the HOA president prior to even, you know, looking at putting a new manufactured home on the site. So, we've, we've gone through every level of compliance, so, and, and the Arnolds are very, you know, particular about ensuring that they're compliant, so that they can get their property up.
I ended up getting a lot more knowledge than I, than I bargained for.
Well, see, one thing that's interesting is, they have all these different income level requirements.
Yes, there are.
But you don't know who qualifies for what.
So, that.
Nobody knows what your income is.
No, they do know. So, you have to provide the income data.
I mean, no, I'm talking about the residents, that's not something the residents need to know about each other.
Right.
It's when they get in there, the different income levels tell them their level.
Right.
But that's not something that's disclosed to the, that's disclosed to the residents. So, you all live in there with all different levels.
Well, the HOA has designated, in order to ensure that they're compliant, there's a number of tiers of income levels that are in the park. So, the residents who have been there for a long time, they are in, you know, and they may have had a higher income, they take up a certain tier. In order to retain compliance with, with the state and city requirements for low income, to maintain that, that classification, they can, they have to, the only certain, only so many residents can be in this particular tier, only so many residents can be in the second tier, and then there, and then the rest of the residents, so right now, because we have a number of people in the park who are higher income, there's no more higher income residents allowed to purchase in the park. So, everybody who's coming in at this point is low moderate income. And unless something changes or people move out, only then can you, but they can't, they're not gonna allow anyone with high income to move in there. So, that's really where it's at at the moment.
Sounds to me like you've become the resident expert or the local expert, so you've got a niche, you've got a niche now that you can carry forward.
I just, you know, it was, it was a lot, that's a very difficult transaction to do in Seal Beach shores.
I bet it is.
You've got to make sure it's really, that you're compliant with everything, Title 25, the HCD, I mean, it's, it's a whole scenario, so. So, anyway, I just wanted to add that point of clarity. I hope that answers your question, because I, they're fully compliant, I can assure you. I went through it all. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, does anyone else have any question, anyone else want to speak? Now, do any of the commissioners have any?
Well, I think it's neat how you know so much about this, going back so far. I think that's great. I think that's neat.
I was involved in it.
Our little built-in, our built-in history book here?
I was involved in it. They had a subcommittee of two, and I was one of the, one of those people, and it was very interesting, and it was, it was fascinating, because we worked with the nonprofit, we worked with a committee of five residents from the trailer park, and to show you, and the gentleman, I'm not gonna call him a gentleman, the man who bought the trailer park, he bought it for a song. There's so much history there, you could almost write a book. He bought it for a song from the widow of the owner, and I think like $2 million, something like that, and it was obviously worth six, and he knew her hus, her late husband, and then he, right away, sent a letter to everybody saying, "I own the park, I own your homes, the rent is being jacked up." At that time, from like $70 a month to 700, the residents couldn't afford that. They banded together, came to the city, what can we do? Got a nonprofit to purchase it, and we got secured bond funding. We had to go up to Sacramento to get another million dollars from this one committee. We got it, and the property was transferred. And this Richard Hall had a court date in April, and we transferred the property, title to the property in the December prior to that. That's how close it was, and, but the city, you know, these are our residents, and we fought for them. It's as simple as that.
So, so do you want to be the one to make a motion on this? Because it is kind of personal.
Okay, anyone want to make a motion?
How about I make the motion? I'll go out on a limb. I move that we approve the plan as proposed.
I second.
Please vote.
And is that included, option of the resolution?
And, yes.
Of course. Whoops. I'm not. I'll say, yes. That's, you say that. Say yes, say, just say yes to her.
I, my second does include that, how about that?
Oh, all right.
White button, white button, white button, white button, white button. There you go. Yeah, there you go.
There we go. All right?
Okay, that passes four to one.
Now, you can clear it. There you go, good. Excellent.
Okay.
Congratulations.
That was four to zero.
Do you have any comments?
Oh, usually Amy says there's a.
Oh, thank you. There's a 10-day appeal period to the city council, and that was a four-zero vote. Thank you.
Okay, good. Okay, that concludes the new business. We have a director's report?
No items tonight, but I'm available for any questions.
I have a question. First of the year, state laws taking effect, have we seen any applications for garage conversions come in yet? I'm just curious.
ADUs?
ADUs.
No more than the two that we previously had, but I'm looking at Planner Fowler to correct me if I'm wrong.
Commissioner Gargis, yes, no new ones as of the new year. We had two previous to that, but we have had quite a few inquiries about it.
Okay.
Let me ask you this, would an ADU qualify for a low-to-mod housing situation?
That's what we're kind of looking at, but, go ahead.
An ADU is, does have to be part of another, part of the entire property, so the entire property would have to qualify for it.
And that would be hard.
And then I have another question related to that. You were gonna bring back a report or something about what the city council took, did action, and so on and so forth, so I'm just, I don't want to hold your feet to the fire, but I'm sure if there's, the commission would be interested in hearing back on what basically transpired at the council meeting.
Yes, and I think I'm remembering that you might not have been, you were not able to attend the last meeting of the year, where.
And you did.
We did provide. But as a, as a quick overview, what I can try to remember to let you know is, there were some additional modifications that were made to the ordinance before the council took approval based on recommendation from the Planning Commission. We were able to set a lot size limitation in order to qualify for an ADU. We took a look at the potential to limit the size of the ADU, but what we saw is that cities that had gone through and adopted that into their ordinance were challenged in court, and it did not, was not upheld, so we did not include that into ours. The council did, there were a few other modifications that are escaping me right now, but they did direct staff to continue to monitor any future changes. We do anticipate there are gonna be additional changes. Some of the things that we did find are in regard to an ADU being located within a certain distance of a transit stop. Some cities were trying to be creative in how they identified a transit stop to be a mass transit stop, so that all of their bus stops wouldn't qualify, and then parking would have to be provided. But then we also saw that the state was working on new legislation to define transit stops to sort of circumvent that loophole that was there. So, we are keeping an eye on what's coming, and we're gonna try to see if there's any future changes we can make, if there's anything that we have seen some people do and are being upheld in court, then we'll, we'll bring it back to the Planning Commission and the city council.
Thank you.
Okay, any commission concerns?
Just a few quick comments. I wanted to say that we've been talking to my city councilman, and we're very excited about the pier being possibly completed this year in 2019, as well as the theater being completed in 2019, so there's gonna be a lot of exciting things in Seal Beach this, this year. I also want to say, real quickly, hi to the Dunphy family at home who are watching us on Seal Beach TV. Thanks.